Okay, call this Village of Green Hills Council meeting to order for Tuesday. Two, two, twenty-two, two, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two.
Can you say that again real fast?
Yeah. Clerk of all rule.
Walter.
Here.
Hermes.
Lee.
Here.
Bess.
Here.
Osmidublu.
Here.
Walter.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Okay, we have a prayer by Mary Walter.
Lord, we ask you to send your Spirit of servanthood upon all of us gathered here this evening to do your work for the benefit of all in our community. We ask you to bless our elected and appointed officials so they may deliberate with wisdom and act with courage. Bless the members of our community who come here to speak before council so they state their cause with honesty and humility. And, Lord, we ask you to bless us all that everything that we do here tonight will move you to welcome us one day into your kingdom as good and faithful servants. We ask this in the name of our brother Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the minutes of the January 25th council meeting and the work session of February the 8th. Do we have any corrections to be made? If not, the minutes stand approved. And at this time, we have the fire chief to present the firefighter of the year for the Green Hills Volunteer Fire Department.
Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Village Manager Kovak, Mayor Moore, members of Village Council, and to all of our Green Hills residents. It's my pleasure to introduce you to Ben Baker Rogers. Ben joined the Green Hills Volunteer Fire Department just two short years ago and has already made a positive impact on our organization. As a pre-med student, in fact, he is one of three pre-med students on our roster, Ben joined the fire department to gain experience in the medical field. He quickly obtained his EMT certification and not long after received his State of Ohio firefighter certification. Ben has been an exemplary member. He regularly attends all meetings and training drills. Ben is in the top 10 in both number of runs made and number of shifts worked for the year 2021. And just like all members, he does so as a volunteer and receives no compensation for his runs or shifts. Ben has gained valuable experience in the pre-hospital setting, which will benefit him as he continues his goal to be accepted into medical school. He performs with confidence and skill and uses his knowledge and ability to collaborate with his peers to provide the best emergency medical care possible. Ben came to the department just before the start of the pandemic and has chosen to continue his service. Ben has a positive attitude, is self-motivated, and exemplifies the character of a Green Hills firefighter and EMT. The Green Hills Fire Department and the citizens of Green Hills are lucky to have a young man of this caliber serving our community. Please join me in congratulating Ben Baker Rogers as the 2021 Green Hills Fire Department firefighter of the year.
So you know, we've got several members of the fire department here that are supporting Ben, deservedly so. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I forget to tell you that?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Then congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We have no public hearings scheduled. Reports of municipal officials, Municipal Manager Yvonne Kovak.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing I want to mention is that I think we have succeeded in finding a great candidate for the clerk of council position. Don't know if you had a chance to take a look at some of the information I sent you this afternoon, but I am hoping at the appropriate time we could, someone on council might make an motion to, it's my understanding we can do that by motion tonight and then follow it up with the resolution at the next meeting. Just to give you a little background on her, her name is Teresa Lally. Did I say that right, Lally? Lally. And she has worked for over 30 years with the Hamilton County Municipal Court system. Since retiring, she's held various part-time positions, but currently works a couple days a week at a local law firm and would like to supplement that with another part-time job and felt that this was a perfect fit. She has great credentials and I think you will really like her. She was planning to be here tonight, but she's not, and something came up, so I'm going to mail her packet of information, but if we could do a motion that would, her salary is $20. Council had indicated that's their desired salary per hour for up to 12 hours per paid period right now, so very excited about that. Another item I want to mention is we had been invited to, I sorted down, to an inaugural signing, agreement signing for the transit funding that we received this year. We were in the first group and we received this beautiful hand-forged plate. They gave up, there were 22 recipients for this year, so it was a really nice affair. I have to really say they did it, did it up round. Everybody did sign their agreements all at the same time. We're waiting to get those back now along with the money so we can start our project. And again, we're using this to pave the shopping center parking lot, the backside of the parking lot, so we're excited about that. We'll be hanging that in a suitable location.
Right, and it's not solid silver though.
No. But still very pretty. Another thing I want to mention is the Facebook. We're, I think we're going to be ready to go, it's a little bit scary, but we're shooting from March 1st. And I did want to fill you in on our policy, which I think reflects council's desire for the Facebook. It obviously would be the official Facebook for the village. We will, police department, all departments will be on the same Facebook, intended for us to share timely information that may be of interest to our residents, businesses, and visitors. What I'm reading to you, by the way, will actually be on there somewhere, I think, under the, like, About Green Hills area. This platform is for the exclusive one-way communication by the village government with no option for general comment. The Village of Green Hills website, www greenhillsohio.us, will remain the village's primary internet presence for official information, and guests will be linked to the website for additional details on a given topic or for forms, documents, and other necessary, information necessary to conduct business with the Green, with Green Hills. If you want to contact the village, they can continue to do so through their website or by calling our administrative office, so.
And that's a week from today?
It sure is. Yes, so, big step. A while back, we talked about the Winton Woods signs, that the artwork we have, they were for the, one of the best music communities and for the 2021 football championship, so they have sent us the artwork and we wiped out that over to Clean today, that's our vendor. And those, I keep pointing at Mr. Lee because he is a volunteer to pay for these. Awesome, there you go. So we can let you know when those are ready, but we'll get those up as soon as possible.
All right.
Then the other thing we wanted to remember to mention is with our retreat being on the 5th, do we want to cancel our work session, which is scheduled for the 8th? And then that's all I would have right now.
Okay. All right, moving on. Law Director Jeff Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick item tonight. I think I mentioned at the last meeting that there was, a bill had been introduced and was working its way through related to, what, Zoom meetings, I'll call it, or, you know, having virtual or remote meetings. That, actually, it's been passed by both houses and it's House Bill 51. The governor did sign it as an emergency measure, which means starting immediately, local governments are, you are permitted to use video conferencing or teleconferencing for meetings, kind, basically under the exact same rules as the last time we were able to do it. This time, it only goes through June, I believe, so, you know, March, April, May, June gives you a shot. And then we'll just see if they extend it beyond that or if there's a need to. And as I've mentioned everywhere I've talked about this, it doesn't mean you have to do it, it just means you have the ability to do it. But that would conclude my report.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Does that mean that if somebody says they cannot be present here and opts for that, not all of us, but somebody is, but that person still would not be able to vote, correct?
No, no. They, under these rules, just like the last time, you can have hybrid meetings where some people are physically present, other people participate through video or telephone conference, and under this temporary rule, you would be able to discuss, vote, you're counted as part of the quorum, it's as if you were there.
Okay.
You are correct that the general rule says you're not allowed to do that, but under this temporary rule, you can.
Okay, my second question that I have, and I've tried to find the answer all around me and I have not been able to. The last I was told was someone from the office of Judge Ralph Winkler made, getting in touch with me. I found something in the internet that says that there is such a thing as a state and wills meeting for first responders, and that April the 9th, the location would be, and it's at a firefighters' union hall, West 8th Street, 1011. And this was instituted by the judge because of the horrific results of 9/11, that so many died and had nothing, no wills and no state planning. Supposed to be pro bono, and I wonder if you can find something else. I've been glued to the phone, I've been glued to the internet, I have not received any more information, but I wonder if some of our first responders can take advantage of that. The first one is going to be April the 9th, and they will need to register for that. Would you like to have whatever information I have now and find further, or that's something that it will not be applicable for here for our first responders?
Our first responders are absolutely able to utilize that if they choose to. I only know, I don't know about this year's program, but I know a few years ago, actually, Wooden Lamping was one of the sponsors of that.
They've actually already had one set, one session.
They have one set already?
It was, it was on one of the Channel, Channel 5, I think.
Yeah, it's Judge Winkler organizes it, and also, it's usually in conjunction with Cincinnati Paralegal Association, I think.
Correct.
And all I can, I don't know the specifics of this year, it sounds like you know more than I do, but it's, it is open to police officers, firefighters, it's completely free. They just go in there, they meet with one of the representatives.
And it will be done pro bono?
Yeah, it's, it's free, yeah.
Correct, 100%, so I don't know, but that's something that we would like to let them know, I don't know.
They may be aware of it already.
I have not received anything yet this year, but I know last year we received notifications, so, sure, we will again.
Sure.
Okay. All right, Clerk of Council.
Oh, no, we're sorry.
Chief of Police Neil Fardoman.
Thanks, Mayor. Usually when somebody tells you they're going to tell you good news, there's the bad news that goes with it. Well, in this case, it's good news and good news. The good news is that our crime rate is down. We only had one Part 1 crime in the last reporting period, and that's typical for cold, dreary January, so that's somewhat expected. What wasn't quite so unexpected is the number of reports we've received back from our residents who have let us know of the service they've received from our officers. We had one instance where we got a call of a dog that was running at large in the A section, and Officer Holbrook, who's kind of an animal person, caught up with the dog, and the dog was very friendly towards him. The report came in that the dog was vicious, but the dog came right up to him and just started walking in kind of in an excited manner and walked himself home. He was lost, well, we thought he was lost, but he knew where he lived, and so then the officer knocked on the door and the person was very happy to see her dog arrive back home. So we're glad that the dog knew what was going on. We had a homeless man that came up here to talk to the court clerk on the night of a recent court date, to discuss the fact that he didn't have his fine money assembled yet, and he wanted to talk with her about that, and he went out to get some papers out of his car and the car wouldn't start. Turned out, after a little bit of investigation and some discussion, we found out he was homeless and was living out of his car, which was now broke down in our parking lot. So we talked with him for a while, we gave him some shelter here in the building. The manager's executive assistant actually got him some food and took out to him, we'd already given him some snacks, but she made sure he had lunch. During that time, we lined up a spot for him in the shelter, but he was very concerned about his car up here, since it was about the only belonging that he had. So we used our community fund, we put him up in a nearby hotel in Forest Park for the night, and the manager's executive assistant, she went home and told her family about it. They were still concerned, they went out and bought him a battery. Now, I can tell you that before that even happened, our services crew, when we contacted them, they had a spare battery, they ran it over here, they couldn't get that spare battery to work, but the one that was purchased for this indigent man did work and he was able to happily drive away. So you talk about it takes a village, there was a lot of people that came together to make that happen. On the evening of February 3rd, we received a telephone call from a worried brother of a Green Hills resident. He stated his elderly sister was a cancer patient, he had been unable to contact her for several hours, which was very unusual. So Officer Brandon Young, who's on duty tonight, was working, and he went over and he was peering in the home using his flashlight and he was able to see the elderly woman on the floor, and she couldn't get up. Well, the brother was still on the line with another officer, and he gave us instructions as to where a hidden key was, so the officer was able to make entry and started to resuscitate the woman before a squad arrived. And she wanted to move, and he said, "No, we're not going to risk a broken bone," and he did everything he could to make sure that she was safely transported to the hospital, so we were proud of his quick actions. We had another happy ending. On February 3rd, right after about 5 o'clock, Officer Rob Lenhoff responded to the I section, and that was to check on the well-being of another elderly resident. This was a 94-year-old father of a man that called us from out of town, and all Officer Lenhoff wrote in his report was, "Son worried about 94-year-old father, made contact, all okay." Well, the son wrote to me, and he filled in a few blanks. He said, "I just wanted to express my appreciation to Officer Rob Lenhoff and the Green Hills Police Department for stopping by my 94-year-old father's house on Thursday to check on his well-being. He lives alone, I had been talking to my dad on the phone on Thursday, the call cut off, and his phone kept coming up busy when I called back. Not knowing whether my, or not, my dad was okay, I called the Green Hills Police non-emergency number. Officer Lenhoff answered patiently, listened to my story, and assured me that he would check on my dad. In fairly short order, I was relieved to receive a call from my dad and Officer Lenhoff that everything was all right. Further, Officer Lenhoff was cheerful and friendly despite having to make the trip in Thursday's messy weather. Thank you to Officer Lenhoff, who went above and beyond to quickly assure the safety of one of our Green Hills most vulnerable citizens. He reminds me of my youth in Green Hills when the public servants were committed partners for the well-being of the community." And Officer Lenhoff received a commendation for that, and in that it said, "There's an old adage that people will long forget what you said and what you do, they will however always remember how you made them feel. Your actions took this concerned family member back to the days of his youth, growing up in Green Hills when he felt safe. You kept your promise to quickly check on his elderly father, and your calm and friendly manner assured him that his father was all right. You most likely made a difference in how the citizen will feel about law enforcement for a lifetime." Sergeant Patton also added, "One can only imagine what was going through his mind when all of a sudden he lost connection with his father on the phone. Your response and follow-up is greatly appreciated, please keep up the good work." Well, not to top that, but I received a copy of something that Sergeant Patton received. Now, those of you that know Tony Patton know he's been here the longest of any of our officers, he's a 33-year veteran of the Green Hills Police Department, and he received this in late January. And it was from a, well, at one time, a young fellow that grew up here, is middle-aged now, I suppose, or early-aged, but he said, "Hello, I wanted to reach out to you," and this is to Sergeant Patton, "and to say thank you. It's been a number of years since the last time I saw you, my parents have moved out of Green Hills, we had a house in the H section. I didn't always make the smartest decisions when I was younger, and I definitely had to refocus my priorities. I just wanted to say that after all these years, it finally hit home how much you've impacted my life. I appreciate what you did for me and thank you for everything you do for the community." We hear a lot of complaints, but a belated life-impacting thank you is something that makes what we do very worthwhile. If you take a look at our website, which is greenhillspd.org, we posted some pretty timely tips about both telephone scams and internet scams, they are very prevalent right now, they're very dangerous, please watch what you click when you're online. If it's a phone number, I know that many in this community pride themselves on their politeness, but if you don't know who's calling, particularly if you have a voicemail or a recorder, let it go to voicemail, don't answer. 90% of the time, they'll hang up, but if you answer, they'll try and talk you into something, they may get you afraid enough that you would give out information that you shouldn't, so anybody that is listening, we hope you heed that advice and take a look on our website to like, look at some of the things we have posted. I'm very proud of two of our officers, Blake Mayberry and once again Brandon Young being mentioned, but they both work a lot of afternoons, evenings, and night shift, and they collaborated because they noticed a lot of people had not enough lights on, and they came up with a whole list customized for Green Hills about when to keep your porch light on, when to keep it off, additional benefits, and some recommendations. We have that in our newsletter, which also is linked to our website, and it's, it's worth the time to read. We've continued training in 2022 in the State of Ohio. This is a program that they discontinued about five years ago, but they have reinstituted a requirement for continued professional training for officers of 24 hours, and they reimburse us the amount of the officer's salary for that training, and we've already received the check, so they're a little bit ahead of us, but we have already started some of that training on deadly use of force. We're going to be training on legal updates, use of force, mental illness training, and several other topics. Our other officers are doing some off-site training. Officer Lenhoff, Zach Braun, and Jared Francis attended domestic terrorism hate groups training, and Officer Braun and Francis recently attended advanced patrol tactics. In terms of our numbers for the month, we made 20 criminal arrests, including charges for operating a motor vehicle under the influence, improperly handling a firearm in a motor vehicle, possession of drugs, and failure to appear. We responded to 183 incidents, including 33 squad runs, 11 warrant serves, 10 fire runs, 10 domestic trouble runs, nine parking complaints, eight motorist assists, eight trouble runs, six lockouts, and six animal complaints, including our little friend over in the A section. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any comments of the chief? All right. And I have nothing to report, no court receipts today. All right, reports of committee, service and streets, Jennifer Osmi, Agul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a committee meeting on Tuesday, February 15th. We talked about a few things, including the sidewalk repairs. Phase 1, 2, and 4 of the sidewalk cutting is completed, and they will start the next phase of con, I can't talk right now. The next phase of concrete cutting will start late March, early April, and the streets included are Ireland, Ingram, Emblor, and Alona. We looked at street sweeping, and that's in the appropriation of the budget for this summer, so that's on there. The transit funding for the parking lot on S-1. We did, we did talk about how great of a job that the service department has done on the roads this winter, really great job, so especially with all this ice, that was not easy. So, and then I wanted to mention, I try not to look at Facebook and Nextdoor a whole lot because you get a rabbit hole of things that you read, but there's a lot of people that complain on there, but then they never really say anything to us, and it's not an official complaint if you say something on Facebook or Nextdoor. So I'd like to stress that if you have a comment or a suggestion concerning the street maintenance, that you can email the service department, and there's a link on the Green Hills website, and you can also report code enforcements and property complaints and any concerns you have to the code enforcement, there's a link on the website as well, or you can always call the village office. Thank you, that concludes my report.
All right, intergovernmental affairs, laws and rules, Mary Walter.
We did not meet today for lack of agenda items. We were going to have something to discuss, but then instead we passed it over to the community development on the last meeting, so we have nothing to discuss today.
Recreation cable television, Natasha Metz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a meeting on 17th at 3:00 PM and just kind of went over some items that I'm going to bring to the retreat to discuss with all of council, and as far as Waycross goes, their summer film workshop is coming up in June. It is for high schoolers and junior high students, so that's 6th through 12th grade. There is a fee, so you'll have to check out more information that comes up on their Facebook page. In addition, they are hiring a part-time position for community outreach. I was told that if you like cameras and you like people, this is a perfect position for you, so check it out. All the info is on Indeed, a link of which can be found on Facebook. So if you're seeing a little trend here, there's, there's one coming up, and that is follow Waycross on Facebook. Thank you.
Okay. Finance and audit, Jack Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had hoped to have a committee meeting, but we were waiting on the finance director to finish up the year-end results. I assume that those are forthcoming, and we can hopefully have a gathering next, next week on, on Tuesday is what we're shooting for. In lieu of, and we'll certainly have those year-end numbers at the retreat on the, on the 5th, but at your place tonight, I put the month in for December 21st, which kind of gives us a snapshot of the general, general fund for the year-end and how, how things ended up. Income tax for, for the year was up, up slightly, just 1%. Real estate tax was up 5%. The general fund revenues for, for the year were up 3%, but most impressively is the general fund balance overall is up 20% over last year. At your place, with a total of $1,922,652.79. In addition to that, you'll, you'll note that the expense, expenses have been following through very, I'm not saying miserly, but we're not, we haven't been spending, spending a whole lot relative to our appropriations, which, which is what we're supposed to be doing. And there were no additional transfers as of that, that point in time. Additionally, I put, because I, because I was curious, and it's definitely unaudited five-year look, look back, but it's, but I went back and looked at the end of December figures for the past five years, and you years, and you can definitely see a trend and increase in the general fund balance, which that's very good. I mean, it's a 39% increase from 2017 to 2021. Interestingly enough, though, is that when you look at income tax revenue and real estate taxes, it's fairly flat. There's not a whole lot of change in that from year to year when you look at the five-year average. Appropriations has stayed relatively the same throughout that period, but when you look at what has been expended in those timeframes, definitely starting in 2019, when we absolutely had to, and being very conscious and cautious into 2020 and 2021, we've done a great job watching our expenses in those areas. The gains really have come from controlled spending. We've been fortunate to reduce the transfer into the debt fund, and then as well as the overall reduction of debt that's happening on the outstanding bonds. So I was greatly encouraged by that. Again, these are unaudited. Deb probably has some adjustments in the final figure, but I thought you'd be interested in looking at that, at our overall general fund performance. Unless anyone has any questions. That's the end of my report.
Community Development, Jeff Holter.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met as a committee this past Thursday on the 17th. Some of the things that were discussed was, we had some recent good news about the Village Gateway sign, I guess is going to get some base treatment and make it a nice entryway into the village. I really still appreciate the trees in the center. I know there's always people that feel on both sides of anything we do, but just driving down there and seeing the row of trees and that strip, it really, I think it was, it's a really nice counterbalance, I guess I would say, to what we've been trying to deal with on the shopping center, to come down there and have that, you feel like you're entering a nice area, and that's what I believe you are doing, is entering a nice area. So I personally appreciate the trees and planting strips in the center there. We talked about continuing the beautification awards, and we're going to have three awards for 2022. Just a reminder that it's non-structural items. We really do want people to replace their roofs and that kind of thing, but this is more about aesthetic, maintenance, quality, upkeep. And please be looking around and see who you can nominate. There's a lot of people that are doing a very good job, and we really want to, you know, call attention to that and in a small way reward them. So in spring, we'll have one in April. We'll have, I think we were settled on two per side of Wynton. And then the same for summer in July, and fall in October. Another thing that we discussed is bringing back the 20 minutes of good, and Natasha had a good suggestion of holding that on. I've picked a tentative date, we'll firm this up for sure later, but on the 23rd, very near Earth Day, you know, getting out and seeing as a community what you can do just in a 20-minute time span. If you're feeling ambitious, double it or go beyond that. But looking forward to some of these things that encourage people to be good residents and members of the community. That concludes my report.
All right, Safety, Melanie Hermes.
The Safety Committee did meet today, February 22nd, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. We had myself and Councilmember Maria Walther there, along with Mayor Moore, Yvonne Kovak, Chief Fodderman, and Chief Spade. So we did have a full component of all of our chiefs. So I just wanted to try and touch base with them since it's near the beginning of the year, kind of where we're at. So Chief Spade did go over kind of a 2022 Fire Department overview. They're still getting by on a $135,000 per year budget, which is phenomenal. It is a volunteer department, and he has spent his career building relationships with our neighbors, and he maintains that we have great working relationships on all of our orders. He did say that the levy is a 12-year-old levy, and when they passed it, they anticipated about $165,000 per year, but unfortunately, it has never really brought in what they were expecting. They currently have 43 members. Ultimately, he would like to have in the 50s, so if you know anyone who would like to, who is interested in becoming a volunteer firefighter or EMT, it'd be great if they could contact the village and particularly Chief Spade. They do send people through EMT class. They're in great shape on all their equipment. They recently had some updates and, I don't know why I want to say glow-ups of their apparatus, but so they've had some repairs and maintenance and some good upkeep on, was it the Quint he said would, he thinks should be able to last another 15 years? So knock on wood, because that is expensive equipment. We did talk about some future needs and where we could be going. Just, we've talked about in general the safety services and where everything's at. And he also talked about trying to get our paramedics staffed up. The majority of calls are paramedics or emergency medicine calls, so trying to get a more robust paramedic.
Force.
Force would be a great idea. And then we also talked about some general upkeep. He mentioned that it would be nice to get the building painted, both on the outside and the inside, and there was some discussion about when the last time the inside was painted, and it seems like it was a very long time ago, maybe when Larry Zettler was a young police officer. If we render back to his information, or, and then there's some flashing around the roof that needs to be looked at. So it was a great discussion and some things that Yvonne is going to look at and work with Chief Spade on. So that was good information. You've already heard from Chief Fodderman today, but he did go over the monthly report, and he did mention that he's working, the police department is working with a Citizens' Police Academy alumni, Karen Cartier from Bayham, on coming up with some community involvement activities. She's reached out to the department and has been very supportive and a great help to the department about coming up with some ideas. And they're tentatively working on some stuff, so keep on the lookout for some information from the police department. Again, doing some more Coffee with the Cop. I know we've done that in the past. They're talking about doing an open house. There was some discussion about a game time with the Green Hills Police Department, and then also doing, clicking with the cops again, and then reintroducing the defensive tactics that we did a few times prior to the pandemic, but getting that back scheduled for, and that would be open to the public to register to learn some defensive tactics. And also talking about introducing, we had started the Warriors Tena Academy right before the pandemic, and then it got shut down, so trying to get that restarted and introduced. So some great ideas and some good information, so please speak with the chief and the police department, and if you have any ideas, and keep on the lookout for some upcoming items. Staffing is good, equipment is good, so we're just looking forward to a great year and hope to keep everyone on track.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add, on February 8th, and perhaps I didn't get, it got on the work session minutes, but not on the regular minutes or whatever it was, it was not announced, but I need to make sure that it's on this minute, so this time. On 2/8/22, we met, it was the dependency meeting, and this is for widows and orphans for the Fire Department. And we met on Tuesday before we came to the work session, hoping that we never have to use that for the widows and orphans. When we met, present on there was the Fire Chief, it was Chris Knight, it was Oki Hoffman, and we went and filled out all the necessary papers online, and it all was accepted. So we are compliant, and I wanted that for the record. Thank you.
All right, moving on. This would be an opportunity for residents and non-residents to make comments solely regarding legislation that's on the current agenda, and we don't have any, so skip over that part. No unfinished business, no new business.
Well, we do have one bit of new business.
Can I make a motion to hire the Director of Council?
Teresa Lyle.
At $20 per hour.
Okay, do we need to poll? Make this voice.
You can do a voice vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Does anybody want to comment on that legislation of hiring a clerk? All right. Do we have any council comments? Anybody?
Just getting ready for the retreat.
Okay, all right. The calendar?
Retreat.
Retreat on the 5th at 9:00.
In location, when I mentioned the location.
Loyes.
Tentatively, March 1st, Tuesday, Finance Committee at 2:00.
Is that it?
Thanks for the, should go live, hard first. Sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Now's an opportunity for residents and non-residents to appear before council. Non-residents must obtain prior permission. This is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council. When elected counties, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. If you have questions, the questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for a response. This will allow time for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcripts. Comments are limited to four minutes. Speakers may not yield any or all of their time to other speakers. Everybody?
I'm here tonight to thank village council members for finally working on a small cell and wireless ordinance. I'm also here to ask you to hire an experienced telecommunications lawyer to review our local zoning ordinance and provide advice as to how to best use the maximum power available to us to regulate the placement of wireless facilities and to prevent the irresponsible placement of wireless facilities and the adverse impacts they could create in our community. As far as I know, none of you are experts on the Telecommunications Act of 1996. Me neither. So I will send you links for three videos made by Andrew Campanelli, who is an experienced telecommunications lawyer. I'll send written transcripts also. I'm now going to read statements made by Mr. Campanelli on video one. Quote, "Contrary to what you may have heard otherwise, when Congress enacted the Telecommunications Act of 1996, it explicitly preserved to state and local governments the general authority to regulate the placement of wireless facilities in their jurisdiction. If your local municipal attorney has told you, quote, 'Oh, your hands are tied' in the Telecommunications Act, and that you can't control these things, and you can't turn down applications,' end quote, you need to get a new attorney. There are two simple things to exercising the powers that Congress preserved to you under the Act. The first is that you must enact local zoning ordinance provisions that have permanent requirements and other requirements for wireless facilities. So sophisticated governments for years have required use permits, DAS use permits, conditional use permits, site planner approvals, and even variances, and they will set forth restrictions on which district you can put them in, height limitations, setback zones, fall zones, things like that. The most glaring deficiency which most local codes suffer is that you must also impose procedural guidelines. You must give your local boards procedural guidelines to understand how to comply with the five procedural requirements with the Telecommunications Act of 1996 imposes on with that. Congress preserved the general power, and that's under the sub-paragraph A of the Telecommunications Act. Under sub-paragraph B, Congress enacted five essentially procedural requirements. The truth is, most local governments and most local boards always violate those requirements because they don't know what they are. So you must amend your code to put them in there. It is not a question of having the power, you have the power available to you. You must simply understand how to exercise it. Now, if you think you're going to use your local municipal attorney to update your code when they don't know anything about the Telecommunications Act, don't bother. You might as well throw your money out the window. Time and time again, I've seen local governments go to their general municipal attorney, maybe they'll spend an hour studying the Telecommunications Act and think they have it down. If you do that, it virtually guarantees that site developers are going to be able to basically ram a facility down your throat, and if you have the audacity to stand up to them, they'll sue you in federal court, and they'll win. It's more important than ever to enact these types of provisions because in the 5G rollout, site developers are more aggressive than ever, trying to put these things wherever they want. They don't look to build wireless facilities in the least intrusive locations. They look to build them in the cheapest location, and they can say or do most anything. In most applications I'm looking at, in 90% of applications, the applicants submit false or materially misleading information. They routinely submit false propagation maps, false FCC compliance reports, material misleading real estate appraisal reports, misleading visual impact analysis. The problem is that there is no guidance in the code to show the planning board how to recognize when a FCC compliance report is patently false. If you don't put that guidance in the code, you've basically thrown your planning board members to the wolves. Many times, I've heard applicants mislead local governments. When they leave, they laugh at how gullible the local zoning attorney officials are. Thank you.
All right.
I'm sure she didn't mean to slide the council and our attorney.
I have called Andrew Campanelli.
Okay.
That wasn't me, sir. That was not me, sir.
All right. I call this meeting adjourned.